I think that's that's the twenty six twenty me twenty six yeah
yes
any mention we approved um in five and six minutes
second full devotion by Chris second by Ken to approve the minutes of June twenty six Andrew and you Andrew all all
that kills
one report you probably don't want to go by alright been awhile but I brought you in some can win the next fire um month of June handled three hundred fifty three hundred thirty five call for service um of those three hundred and thirty five calls we had um two warrants two arrests on warrants one gentleman wanted on three separate warrants the other gentleman wanted on one warrant arrest for um kernel mischief and violent one arrest for assault arrest early wire failure start and it's giving opposed to the speed limit by thirty mile an hour guess with that um and just some rough stats for fiscal year uh July first twenty three through June thirtieth twenty four Monmouth Police Department handles four thousand two hundred ninety five calls for service of these calls for service there were eighty four arrests made during that one year period um I also just like to remind everybody that uh I cannot speak on active investigations that are occurring in the community um and paramount that is just the fact that to officers safety issues so um if you want to speak about certain incidents call me up and I'd rather tell you the same thing in my office yes
alright can we refer any constituents who have concerns to you
yes
okay and can tell us why why that
it's an officer safety issue and the more information that gets out to the general public the less likely are we are to solve
I'll put that up on this
uh again Community Night Out I think everybody here has or if they don't have will have before you leave a little pink slip that says um our Community Night Out is August sixth at five at the end of Monmouth PD building uh traffic signs we started putting the traffic signs out um and from June thirteenth June twenty fourth we had one of our signs set up on Route one thirty five and just in the area of uh Launch Drive for an eleven day period facing north catching all northbound traffic during that eleven day period um we had a total of seven thousand nine hundred thirty one vehicles go through that that zone which surprised me the volume um for that eleven day period that particular area is supposed to thirty five mile an hour zone speeds that we got in that area um out of seventy nine hundred we had seventy five hundred ninety five were traveling less than forty miles an hour two hundred and seventy four that are traveling forty one to forty five fifty three that were traveling forty six fifty miles an hour seven that were traveling fifty one to fifty five and only two that were traveling between fifty six and sixty um it just goes to show that um all the complaints we get of speeding motor vehicles is really not an exorbitant speed on these roads it's just that people's perceptions are different uh we then for the next eleven days turned the sign around and had it facing uh southbound traffic and we had about the same volume and same results uh
how do they get going that fast up here coming down for the ones that are doing sixteen whatever
yeah they do
okay
but not as many as as people would assume
not my adult life
um if you go on to the next page you'll just see the breakdown of the calls by hour and day for the for the month of June the following page is um the July to June fiscal year um breakdown by day and hour the next three pages I guess um the type of complaints we handled during that um twelve month period and have broken down to percentages on by number of calls that we had in those specific um specific lines the next lap next to last third page and just graph showing the call volume for the first six months of twenty three and the first six months of twenty four you'll see a incline months of May and June which is which is normal for this time of year the sun starts picking up so it only explains and then the last two um pages are just results from the traffic sign first one's a pie chart showing the uh the volume of vehicles that went through and their speeds and then the last page is just a breakdown on day to day um the volume going through there I was I gotta I can tell you I was amazed at the the amount of traffic that actually blows on that that road and I never would have guessed it could be that high but facts don't lie
imagine season
oh yeah absolutely yeah cancer open
yeah
some cancer
yeah and you might have hit it on the day when you turn over
yeah well like I said it's a it's an eleven day window that we did this did this on so well down through you know roughly nine nine hundred and ten cars a day going to self bound and nine hundred coming through sweatpants any questions if not I turn the floor over to our BW director thank you folks I appreciate this floor
thank you is it black
no
so uh I'll give you a quick update where we are and then you by way of the questions uh we're prepping for paving we're gonna be paving uh Wilson Pond Road from New Street to Old Lewiston so the far end where they're not gonna be uh doing the water main work I'm skipping that uh with some work down there to pull the shoulders um so we have drainage issues all over all over town you see a lot of fan washes on the shoulders those are caused because the water can't get off the road get off the shoulder can't get to the ditch year to year the plow on the sand and some of them the the firms are uh six eight ten twelve inches um just on uh on that section of uh Wilson Pond Road we took uh about twenty truckloads of material out took us almost two days so a lot of work there we uh we did determine that a culvert cross culvert under the road was so badly plugged it we had to take it out so it already got rid of that they're supposed to be gone we're tied in with uh with what weather is doing there is one there they have a section in uh Wilson Pond it's about eight hundred feet long so um that's why we're we're not uh we're also doing town farm row down South Monmouth uh we started pulling the shoulders down there uh today uh yesterday um there's a lot of water water there like that ultimately so when we're short handed it really impacts uh our workload uh we're short one guy one retired uh about a week after I started so I guess uh I'll take the now we have now we're working around vacation so um that impacts our workload we uh we hurried up and got a bunch of work done at done down at the beach without the docks and we we were uh we had new docks um that were Department of Conservation building forests so we had to go pick those up and they get to that's where the new one goes take this old one move it over here that kind um game we don't then we got the uh we helped fire department out get their faults out for the uh for their Fourth of July fireworks they're not pulled apart but yeah so um you know we've been busy getting more and done helped out with the fair getting stuff cleaned up for that um we've done some brush trimming several places um I have a pet peeve about brush block in signs very dangerous blocking people on that side you know and somebody said it wasn't stealing it's I know it's very painful um so we we take days and we pick away at that but we've been pretty active um I think
the banners look great
yeah good um we got I think ten of them up today
makes the scene
the the folks on Facebook want to know when it is that we're expecting Blue Road and Morgan Road finished those
just okay so the pavement patch so Blue Road's different we got a culvert there that means we have to change that does not fall under FEMA money so it's a deep culvert we're gonna need help on that one so I have to get a car drive to help us with that so that's the game plan there the actual patching of the pavement so we have a significant amount of patch that's gonna fall that falls under FEMA so we have to go through the FEMA hoops plus the paving guys are busy for them to schedule a day to come do um what amounts to ten tons of pavement work doesn't creep to the top of their schedule when they could be putting a hundred and fifty tons out or or much more the the company you know the big road paving companies they had no interest in doing that work so you we're we're chasing the the small and just I I never look at paid books I've never seen any just so you you know how to be home
uh the other big question of the day was uh the the salt shed um the article was turned down for a borrowing seven hundred fifty thousand dollars
oh
build a salt shed can you elaborate a little bit on couple things there about what that means for our road treatment
yeah
in the winter and then secondly why has it got seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for salt
I guess we'll go to shed first and then I'll explain why why salts important so the salt shed um I think we went with a boilerplate design so before I came along you know this ball got wrong which it needed to to happen um I think the engineer went with okay this is what uh Jonesville did and Smithfield and you know took a bunch of them and and here's the options I don't think the 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 size of the building was ever determined um we don't need a building that's their whole old salt for the entire winter we definitely need a building that will allow us to be two or three weeks ahead um I don't know if it happened in Monmouth uh it might be three winters ago now massive shortage so nobody in the state we had several storms in a row Portland the state all the big boys were were eating out the pile then the bar so the stuff comes up on this massive barge the barge was three days late getting in and then they have to offload it so la di da so getting caught is bad so having material on hand ahead is very important right now in our building down here uh then I'm sure everybody's familiar I can handle I can put in about uh sixty six tons of salt um those two storms in in April went we all know how how stuff you know we thought we'd come through the winter nice and easy then April comes and we spent some money because the storms why this also very specific to building a salt shed you can't just put it on now imperative it has to be on imperative so so it has to be either on hot mix asphalt to a subset sub specific depth or concrete concrete is obviously much more expensive it has to have concrete walls on three sides with a door because the whole key to assault shadows to prevent leaching you don't want the the salt getting into the ground you don't want it leaking out of the building and getting in the ground rains come so immediately goes right into our aquifer or uh you know a stormwater runoff or streams I didn't know when I came down in lakes and streams whatever it's in modern quite amazing the other I've lived here my whole life you know local there's ponds I've never been to not fish the one over here so um that's why uh do I think it would take seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for us to build a sufficient salt shed no um also but cost of equipment and construction has gone up we all know what it's like I come to you and I want a plow truck and I said this plow truck is gonna cost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars next summer when the thing shows up well stuff has gone up and it's a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars I have to come back to you and ask for fifteen thousand dollars we all know how popular that so um try to avoid that at all cost um does that answer you on the on the actual building
so there are some you know light duty salt dead uh you know that you could you could find with a quick Google search for fifteen thousand bucks
okay so
why wouldn't that work
we still need the base you still have to have this is directly from NDA and now clean water stuff and so what what the base has to be we have to sit on I think it's four inches of hot mix asphalt I'm not a hundred percent sure might even more um the walls can't be four inches thick because you know you it there's a lot of load stress against it
right
so I think they generally go eight inches so that there's some expense there now it's what do we put on top you know there's all kinds of options I've seen wood construction I've seen metal construction I've seen the hoops with uh with uh fabric so the fabric ones you run into problems with storms come on um I like analogies sometimes if we put a fifteen thousand dollar structure on top of two hundred thousand dollar base is like if I'm if I'm gonna buy a tool I'm gonna and I got a garage so we have a garage I want good tools so I I'll buy a wrench set so that we have the tools to work with I'm not gonna go buy a dollar store adjustable wrench and say here's that wrench we could we could buy five hundred of those for the cost of the wrench set but what are our losses in between if we get water inside the building we have storm damage to to achieve tar um I've lost a lot of salt over my years of doing this because you know way back in the day with blue top special water gets in the salt salt chunks up um then it's pretty much useless until we get it dried out uh they do add uh anti caking agent um to to help it to stop clumping but the more moisture introduced to cement I mean to solve is you know sand too um causes a lot of waste so you know I had you know I'm trying right now to move down here we have issues so um you know we lost some salt over over town you know it's all uh you know it's cheap there's Cadillac that probably this you know the state every every state um where I dad saw that I love that huge you know they they can back in dump the trailer truck is the assault all comes on on trailer dumps um so they can back right again they they uh they house more salt uh to use in a month than we probably use in three years it's you know what's the capacity we want we want to hold I I think you can say if you want to you know we'll have three weeks out so then if we run into something I mean I think every everybody in here has been around along long enough to have seen some what a real winter is like um as it changed forever you seem to get a lot more ice now that's a story aside you want me to speak on why I am solved support
will we go there one other question
sure
why can't we outsource it why can't we just say some practice
well so wherever we have it stored it had if if we're gonna we still have to prove that it's stored in a building that's appropriate and matches what uh what the guideline there's specific guidelines
are there contact uh i- is there a private entity that we bring that for
I thought that I know but I'm sure a contractor that had a barn would love to put some salt in there the thing one of the key things about that is now you're you're losing control of salt so we are I have salt down it you have a big barn and you say hey we put the salt in here well now Jimmy Jones is gonna come over and get it and Fred's contracting hey I'll buy some salt off you it it's you you have no control very expensive
tell us more about why you think it's important to to go to self
so
and and maybe you can finish up with given that there is no salt shed in the pipeline now what can we
so salt is and I blame the DOT because fifteen or twenty years ago roads were snow covered everybody accepted that you had snow ties on if you wanted to go out you drove on snowy road then it became black and wet because the salt went to the state went to so now the expectation is why isn't everybody there or not there but safety is a big key there's all kinds of data about the number of accidents that happen people especially early in the year you know they forgot what it was like driving on April second when we got fourteen inches in November when we get out first um safety cost of insurance goes up because accidents happen so there's those economic pieces of it then we have environmental which you see all the sand we put out we put out uh somewhere around twenty five hundred yards of cement um just the past year that I know um so that sand has an impact the sand gets into our tributaries the cement gets into the lakes the sand gets into all our stormwater structures the sand gets into all I did the sand burns up and ruins our shoulders so the water can't get off the road it is not an engineer that won't tell you that the most important thing to do is get the water and most of that's done subsurface but if everything's fogged up the water has nowhere to go we go through pre-stress cycles and get road damage the um should I well I can go to town and wait um if you're driving down the road and uh you notice that especially on the right the ditch side tire is a bigger wheel rot than on the middle of the road part of what happens is you have a ditch that's made to get the water away from the road the heavy truck traffic the volume of traffic seven thousand guys walked in ten days going down one mile road it's I guess that's why it's squished back the 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 road gets squished out so when you squish it out it humps up you know if you put your hand down into a into a bowl with cream it's gonna squash out you'll you'll have a hump on the side that also is a determinant and once that stat's happening now it's just paving it's not gonna fix you have to fix a ditch you have to fix your shoulder then you put the pavement on because if you just put the pavement on the problem's already created until you can get the water wet you have an issue and if you don't fix it you you know you throw money you know I won't pave a road until you fix but we have to fix the best of our ability you know I can't we can't go down and fit change replace every color on uh Wilson Pond Road for example because it costs prohibitive but we can do the best that we can to get the water moving
what can we do given our circumstances
we're doing we're doing it today with a status quo we're gonna do what we've been doing we have to use uh we have new CNN we have to use mixed salt in with it um I think that uh before in times past the the mix ratio of them like twenty five percent salt to seventy five percent sand so if you put three buckets of of sand you'd add one bucket of salt that you mix sand does absolutely not zero gives you a little bit of grip right when you put it down during a storm pretty soon it's tracked off or snow covered and it's no good salt keeps working so salt will will uh make a briny layer underneath the snow it keeps the 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 snow from uh adhering to the pavement everybody's seen you get a heavy wet snow you get deep snowpack on a road that freezes now you got ice and it's very hard to get up it's very expensive to get up by melting it it's very hard to get up especially when you don't have newly paved road to do it with equipment so there's a lot of cost factors that go into it my plan is to up our our salt I'd rather go seventy five salt fifty uh sand we're gonna um calibrate our equipment to work that way we're gonna do we'll be quite a bit of training involved um you know this is how I want it done um you know
we still gonna see the town line meaning when when people drive in to Monmouth
well I hope they hope they're happy when they get their inbound you know if they're outbound well I'm sorry you had it good for awhile I I I don't like having accidents um and and when I when I mean that is anybody here having an accident with a snowstorm and chief's crews gotta go deal with it we have radio so I always try to take note and why was the road in what kind of poor shape was road in during the storm you know it could be a one of our uh obscure roads that you know we may not get here for three or four hours because one thirty five is way higher priority traffic so we try to figure out okay why did an accident happen most generally it's driver inattention uh inability Inattention, uh, inability, uh, green drivers. It's early in the year. That's generally what happens. But, you know, if the road's all icy, I wanna know that. We're gonna try to, try to do something. So we'll be putting out less material, but we'll be putting out harder material so that we get more beneficial work from it. One, you get out and salt work. You know, it's expensive. Because the good news is. We didn't have a, no pricing.
Mr. Chair, will we move on to another topic? Yeah, there might be some important matters that I want to ask you. On the pink road, that old square hatch, since I didn't know it needed a cover. Wouldn't it be possible to maybe put some patch over it temporarily since you have to wait? So people have gone over the hill. I'm like, I've gone over the hill and people are going around there. You're looking at this stuff.
You know, so I see wants to go around there.
That's a temporary.
No, I I agree. So temporary pavement's a tough one because. If I put it out there this morning. We just got that thunderstorm. It's. The effectiveness of it is a big chunk of it's gone. We have put some uh, reclaimed asphalt out there, tried to pack that in. That stuff seems to hold better up against rain. Um. Hot mixed asphalt is. You know, it uh, it's expensive to do a temporary patch. We're getting closer to actually doing that, Albert. Um. What's, you know, our priority list right now is, was Wilson Bond Road because. I don't want the paving crew. Those those guys, their schedule's very tight. So I, it's not gonna be the town of Martin's fault. That they couldn't come on the week that their schedule. Because once they leave, getting them back is unbelievable. And. Another thing that commonly happens is towns. In Maine, we're getting our roads ready to get paved. It takes a long time and a lot of work to get them ready. So it's September. Before everybody's ready. Well, now every town is ready and every town's calling. Now, if we're gonna put down uh. If we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in paving. And Lewiston's putting down. Two point three million. They're not gonna come in for us. You know, they're gonna squeeze us in. But yes, we'll look at that uh, because I had that cut for the culvert replacement. These three, four weeks ago. So right now, we gotta finish Town Farm Road and have that ready. Um, because they may be coming in next week or the weekend. So. At that point is now I gotta line up a co- a contractor. Our excavator's just not big enough. I don't know if anybody stopped. If you stopped to look where that culvert is, it's. You know, to the bottom of that thing's nine feet. It won't be nine feet when I'm done fixing it, you know, I. And I don't know if the road got built up over time. And I I even talked to her about it. I said, what's wrong? Why is this so deep? I don't know. That's a good question. But it's been there for a long time. There's a relief culvert, so, um. If you're looking at the pipe, end of the pipe culvert. Apparently, a really a lot of water comes down off that hill because there's a a pipe about halfway up. That will take the overflow. That culvert has a lot of, the 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 real one is plugged. You know, it's probably working at thirty percent capacity. The overflow culvert's fine. But once we replace it, um. There's a metal culvert in there, so I can downsize. And put a plastic culvert in, so a. Don't hold me to this, please, the percentage I'm gonna tell you. But. If I put a twenty-four inch. Metal culvert in. Or a twenty-four inch plastic culvert, the plastic culvert handles about thirty-three percent more water. So I can go down a size. The whole key to to covers, you know, when you're driving along the road, you can tell where everyone is on your road. Well, if you don't have enough cover, cover over the, over the uh, the culvert itself. You get compaction over time and that's the allos bumps. Nobody likes those things. Bleach keep does because it slows down.
And then on the salt shed. Um, you had mentioned the base rock figures two twenty-five thousand.
I have no idea. Okay, that that. Well, the con- the, I don't, I have no idea what concrete.
I was going for that. Um, and and Tim had mentioned that maybe a constant hut, you see them out there, ten, fifteen grand. So let's say they go crazy with the cul- with with the constant hut. And shoot out a hundred and fifty thousand. So now we're talking about four hundred thousand. That's why I think what got people was seven hundred when they could clearly see. I know this is done before you got here. But I think that's what got to people is because anybody could see that, just so costly.
So what we had was a report from the engineers. So Justin can help out on this part. And w- w- we talked in his office and I said, there's no way it's gonna cost that. You know, I don't, this town doesn't need a building that's. I don't need to be able to put uh, um. Twenty. Tractor trailer loads of salt. I just don't.
And if it would have been voted.
Well, that's. I I I haven't complained that you got voted now, trust me. It, I vote. And I value the 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 uh, the value of voting. Because I can complain when. You know, you can't complain if you don't vote at least. Oh, so I'm all for voting.
And thank you.
And and voting's uh, you know, every opinions, everybody's got them and. You know, it gets voted down, we go back to the drawing board. Okay, what can we do next? I'm not gonna just give up, I will tell you.
Thank you. I look to you. My name's Dan Mayberry. I live on Peace Hill Road. I, you know, you have. Now, I did see you came on Town Farm Road. What is the plan for Peace Hill Road, so around the same same time period? You gonna come visit and?
No. Um, but I did start marking uh, um. Some of the gravel dogs. So. Everybody, you said, I've seen the Dixie commercials on TV. So we have to Dixie gravel dogs. To grade them, but they're good for a year. So. When I, um, I I know I just painted Perkins, um. Cover. Cavernies. And I was actually gonna paint Perkins and get, I mean, Peace Hill. Um, so Peace Hill's gonna take us quite a while. There, the shoulder's up there. Um, the only one.
Like with this.
The only one, the one, the one that's uh. Comes out.
Yeah, I heard it.
Just, it's it's this way from Warden. The one that ties into Warden Road, what looks like a weight road, a leg. Said Blake's, that's got some bad stuff too, and where it goes underwater. So we have to fix Warden Road shoulders. And I wanna, um. That one's really bad.
With the, with the last rainstorm we had last night? Now, right up there on the top of the hill where it goes to the curve. The water's come and made a, this might, a spot there, it's coming across, which all that stuff. Comes down on my side, goes through my culvert and stuff. And I actually have a spot where I go in with my tractor. And I clean this stuff out every year. And we're talking probably. Three quarters of a dump truck to a dump truck load. I'm actually running out of place to pick this stuff.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't take long to 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 for it to add up, you know, especially when you're, we're out there all the way along. But uh, so grading is. Becoming higher priority now. Soon as we're done getting ready for for paving. Grading is, is uh. Is uh. Becoming near the top of the list, but. I have to go where. Worst case scenario is for us for for drainage. And I understand everybody's voting, most important, to get. I live on a street that uh, got messed up paving and. I wasn't happy, but. Is what it is, so. So, we will be. Yeah, I'm just, I just, I guess uh, we will not be able to, we don't. Funding wise, we won't have the money to, um. Put enough gravel on. All of our gravel roads that uh. To get the crown back in them, so we help our drainings as best we can. The game plan is to spread those funds out. So that what we do in Spont, um, because I know it, um. So if you're coming in from uh, Town Farm Road and. Coming around the corner, that's bad right there.
Oh, it's vulnerable.
And then. I believe you're on the right at that.
Yeah, I'm the first.
So you start up the hill and uh, there's some ledge there.
Yeah, yeah.
And it goes along flat and then there's ledge on the other side. So through that section is bad. We gotta figure out something that we can do there. So that will be where on Peace Hill. We focus.
So what they did one year, though, I know this is on before. They actually found some reclaim. And they put him and put it in that window area towards my place. I don't know if we could use it somewhere else. But that reclaim actually helped for a long time. Until the grading got born and now my road's wider and I'm.
So reclaim, and it wasn't that long ago. Um, you know, ten, ten, ten years ago, they used to give it away. You know, they'd melt up a road and it was. Hey, you want this? And they, nobody wanted it. Well, then they figured out, hey, this stuff's pretty good. So the cost. Of. You know, like I can buy three quarter crushed gravel right now for about. Nineteen dollars, I think, eleven. Reclaim's now thirty-eight dollars. They used to give it away. Now it's double what. The gravel options. It's like, it's a faster period product. But here we go with, okay, where's the, where's the breakpoint on cost of? Boy, I'd really like to ask some knowings and reclaim and and do it. And it's the best stuff. I've. I understand that, but.
Just something different than the town sand business, because that just.
So, yeah, so. So our gravel pit, yeah, our gravel pit is, um, you know, it's bad ground gravel, uh, it gets screened. So. My analogy, you got a bowl, you got a uh, a bowl of marbles. Okay, you can't compact that bowl of marbles that long. Round rubs on it and it moves. Where brushed is, has, you know, it has flat edges, has sides and stuff, so you can compact. Huge difference. So if we're gonna, if I'm coming to. Peace Hill and we need to build a road up, uh, you know, six or eight inches. I'm gonna put four inches of the. Our gravel in there to save money. And then the surface has to be. A uh, crushed type gravel. That's the only way that you can get the compaction that you need. You know, it's like I was asking the guys the other day, we're. Back when we were grading, I go, well, where do we run a roller? And they go, we've never rolled. It doesn't, no good for us to grade it and we're not gonna roll it because we're gonna be right now. And we saw what the spring was like. It was horrible. It was late, it was wet. And grading was a night. You know, uh, there was. Uh, Perkins was a, was a bad one and buses were having trouble out there. So it was. I could grade it today. We'd get rain and the next day the buses couldn't get in there again. So, you know, that was an uphill battle and it still is. And I'm, you know, we're gonna chip away at stuff. We just can't fix it all, all at once. So that's I can tell you.
I do thank you for coming up when you've come up and so.
Yep, my fault.
I do appreciate it.
Would you tell me like, um, North.
South, um, like South Model Road.
Going from Cobble City down to one forty-six. You know, it's kind of windy and it's got a heck of a, a crown on. Why do you guys sand down the center of it? Where if you, if you're coming down and there's another car coming the other way. You're gonna be well over the white and the chances of you. Ending up in the ditch are very high.
So.
I come from North New England State. We never sand down the center of a road.
So. This is where, uh, one of the key things about salt is, okay? So you've got a crown, it should be somewheres between two and three percent. Okay, side slopes. So your road's like this, not like this. And if it's like this, you're in real trouble. And ours are like this. If you put the material down the center, it starts to melt. What's there, whatever snow's there and stuff, makes a brine. That brine, the. Will work its way from the high point out to the low points. So it travels. That's why. Lot of, lot of vehicles and car, uh, application vehicles, they're built so that you're putting up the. Material out in the middle of roads with the road looking to the world. If you're putting the material out near the shoulder, now you're losing, you get. When you put the material down, they call it scatter, the stuff bounces. You see more stuff. You know, sand bounces. So it just goes in the ditches, going absolutely nowhere. That's the science behind it. That's why. True, a lot of water. You think the chief would have brought me a car? Yeah.
I'd just like to say it's refreshing to have somebody who can intelligently. Communicate to us and answer questions and explain things. It's been a long time.
And he knows. I'll answer you. You're not always gonna get the answer that you want or you like, but at least I'll explain why we're doing what we're.
You're able to stand up and liberate our people. And that's important to us people.
Thank you. Did you hear that, Norm?
So I'll just add one, one thing. I was surprised that they only put up. Two hundred and fifty thousand two fixed roads. When I saw just driving around, I go fishing a lot too. Just through the town, how bad the roads really are. So, I mean.
So.
I would have rather gave someone that seven hundred thousand or whatever just for the roads and stuff.
So.
I'm actually trying to help you there, you know.
Well, no, I'm trying to come up with another analogy for you because I, I think it does explain it. But, um. So. I I guess we'll say, we'll use COVID, COVID come along and and stuff. So every time you miss. An opportunity to, whatever amount of paving, you're gonna, now, do I think that two hundred and fifty is way short? I can tell you, if for us to catch up, we're probably gonna be like seven fifty for several years. That would get us caught up. But as you start falling behind, you get farther and farther behind. So now the trick is. The worst ones, okay, so they're so bad, there's nothing. Is this a good way for me to spend my money? Or do we go to the mediums so I can save that? And we do a real construction project if it's really bad? That's where the uh, shuffling comes along. So. You know, roads are expensive. It's just gotten more and more expensive. Uh, it's a commodity. Um, if you watch, uh, if the gas price goes up. Paving price goes up. Because every one of those pieces of equipment, all the trucks, everything's running on fuel. Part of the uh. The emulsion that makes the, makes the uh, pot mix is a byproduct of. Of uh, making diesel fuel. And it used to be. Not, not quite as cheap as reclaim, but, you know, it was a byproduct. So, hey, we can fix roads and stuff. But. Once again, costs gone up, you know, labor's gone up, equipment's gone up. You know, I don't know what a paver costs, but I'm. Guessing it's somewhere north of seven. You gotta put a lot of mix down, I'm sorry.
I have no question. I am just so happy to. Have you on the, that is.
I'm happy to be here.
Yeah, I just wanna say thanks too. You know, I mean, this past year, um, I had a struggle. And I know we've had some concerns in Monmouth with plowing in the winter and other things for sure. This past year, I was heading up Cobb Sea, and if anybody's over where the lake is, and they're kind of going up this road toward. I don't know the names. You know, it, you're kind of going up and I, I couldn't make it up there and I ended up sliding back down. And when you're sliding backwards and have a little control of your vehicle and the only thing there is water on both sides, it's starting to get. It's not funny, kid. Um, it's. Cause you're either going backwards and you're saying something I don't wanna say. Or you're trying to go forward and you're trying to get that momentum and it wasn't working. So I just wanna say thank you because. Well, the only thing that went by me in about twenty minutes was a Subaru who flew by me. Um, you know, there was a plow person from Monmouth who actually stopped, couldn't get, honestly, couldn't pass me because of the way I was. Across the road, but they actually navigated and were very helpful in helping me get unstuck.
That's good.
With their sand and giving me a little bit of, um, you know. An opportunity to move so they could pass me and then I was able to follow them on the rest of the hill. But I mean, it took a lot of time. I just wanna, you know, say that there, for all the challenges that we've had in the past. It's really helpful to know that I know that people are working hard and, you know, not everyone gets a vehicle that doesn't go up a road. That's changing, by the way. Um, but, uh, you know, it's appreciated when people stop and, and, and help out where they don't necessarily need to. But, you know, it was late and they were doing the best, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
They tell you, well, all day, I'll drive you home, brother.
Not to the golf course.
Thank you. And feel free to call. I will respond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not much. I, I confirmed that Casey will be there all twenty. It was, uh, we should have had it for your last meeting. There was a miscommunication with their administrative staff and they just didn't send it. Regarding schedule, um, they are gonna start putting together their. Um, this is a rest for the excellent. They think they have a little availability in the end of July, calls other their. Um, lower level associates to start doing their queries for, um, uh, getting invoices that they, that they wanna sell the check on it. Um, and, but they've scheduled, uh, their time to be, um, in town in early November. That's how. Worked out they are, Mark is available then, um, uh, help us, uh, through that. And this will be the first year then. We'll finally be angling to that Mark helped us through, so now we can be the primary contact that we can get them. And it'll be the first year that I was, you know.
Did we get the, uh, letter of the Senator Collins off?
Yes, she is, um, her, uh, person Allison is busy for the next couple. Of your meetings. She thinks that she's the person to, um, represent her office. And I think it will be sometime, it will be the first meeting in August, I believe, is what I'm thinking.
Uh, next, our select board report.
So we put the bully lines in, and the docks were put in, and we started. Uh, public works, stand down and help out, put the loader, our department help, uh, we put the docks in. Have staff that have not, um, been finished behind any pockets, that sort of what they got in. And we finished up, we worked really hard, um, getting things done super fast. Last week, so they opened on Sunday. Uh, for a huge party. And, um, so we started like during that day, then when. Um, so far this week, it's been hot, a little bit, and it's been dizzy in the afternoons. Uh, we start snow lessons on Monday. We're gonna run two, two week sessions of snow lessons. Uh, as of right now, we have seventeen kids signed up and I don't know how many for each session. I just click on it for a quick.
Thank you. We're meeting the trails committee. And I see Chris Bryant online. And Joel was there too. Um, I'm sure I'm forgetting some of it, but, forgive me. Um, the trust may make on slide last. Agreed that, uh, our best chair is gonna be Chris Bryant. And agreed that, uh, we would be, uh. Looking very carefully at creating some trails behind school on RSC two property. Um. Potentially asking the snowmobile club to make use of some of their access. Off of, uh, one three two. Coming down in the process. Um, it looks like we're gonna be looking for a permanent representative from the snowmobile club. Stan is not able to make a physical change in his work schedule. So, um, we folks know, uh, someone on the snowmobile. Club or would you be, well.
Came up at our meeting last night.
Say again?
They came up at our meeting last night.
Hopefully we'll send someone. For working, cause we, um, there's some opportunities to make last Friday mornings, that's the goal. Well, um, maybe there, maybe there's some. Um, if you guys wanna make a suggestion. We have a debate in the US. The Friday, Friday. Yeah, here. You coming? I'm hoping you do. That'd be awesome.
Chad, sorry, I don't know how to raise my hand. This is Chris. Chad Wright has expressed interest in joining. We just need to find. A meeting time that would work better for him. Friday mornings are not going to be able to work on a regular basis. He's very interested in being a part of this.
Chris, your, your volume was turned down a little bit. Would you mind, would you mind just saying, saying it again, so we can all hear?
Sure. Um. Why didn't you come through? Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out how to raise my hand here again. Um, Chad Wright has expressed interest in joining, but the Friday morning time doesn't work well for him for regular meetings. So, uh, I don't know if, eh, and, you know, there, there were some other people. Sean Schultz has expressed interest. Uh, he's not from the snowmobile club, but again, Friday morning would not work for him once school starts. So. If we can find another time, I'm sure we can get some other good people on the committee. So we'll just need to talk about, talk about that.
Let me ask a clarifying question. Since I heard that from the snowmobile club, is, did you say that there was a trails club in Monmouth?
Committee.
Trails committee?
Yes.
Is that a town plan?
Yes.
Would that not fall under rec, like, on the recreation plan?
Nope, we decided as a select board to set up a separate trails committee. Um, and this was about four or five weeks ago, was the result of. Uh, recommendation from the economic development. And it follows our revisions to the TIF district that was the result of the survey. So a year and a half ago, we surveyed those, asking them what they wanted to see in terms of prioritization of TIF funding.
Is that a comprehensive plan that we're doing? No, I'm not. I haven't seen that taken.
Hmm, so I, I can't answer that question.
So what happened in the recreation community? So I think trails would fall under that.
So, uh, right now, we're in a process of rebuilding the recreation community. Um, nonetheless, because trails were singled out by the voters as the number one thing that they wanted. Uh, to, number one priority to, uh, be the intention of the. The CM, the TIF district, the main street TIF district in terms of funding. Um, we made the decision to create a separate committee.
Want me to talk about expanding that to RSC two property? Is that only part of the discussion with RSC two?
It does. Absolutely. I've had that conversation with you, one of the superintendent. No, no, just an informal conversation, so that both are aware, um, that that is, that is our line of thinking and certainly.
It is, that was to build somewhere, that upcoming to the board of the RSC two.
Of course it is.
Surprising. That's why, thank you.
It's surprising.
Because I hadn't come through the school board to get permission to build trails on RSC two property. It has to go through, cause RSC two.
We're not even at the point.
That may be, and that may be. I mean, I was just trying to, that's why I was saying, just getting clarification. Because I wanna make sure, cause there's also been conversations about building trails ourselves across country and other things. So. I just wanna make sure there isn't conflicting.
Still bothers me that we pay five hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars a month to the school system, we can't even use the school.
Well, that's, um, I don't think that that's accurate. Schools are public, they're used, they're just rules for it. But our insurance requires that we have rules for it. So I mean, it's like any other thing. We can't access this building. We can't get keys out. The town doesn't give keys out to the public to use this building either, because we have rules that take care of it. Right, but I mean, the town can't, you don't just hand keys out to townspeople to use this building. You have to have rules behind it, right? Somebody has to take responsibility, clean it, same things. Like, I guess I don't understand how that would be different. You don't have insurance if somebody from the town uses this building, they got hurt in the building or something happened. You don't have insurance requirements. I mean, I do in terms of the business in my house or something. If somebody. Hurt themselves in a building that the town is just giving them a key to and there's damage. I mean, I was one of the tasks there to know that, you know, that is being, that, you know, insurance covers that.
Saying we pay a lot of money.
Sure.
In the school system and.
We have volleyball clubs, adults that are using volleyball for the schools every Sunday. What, when people use it? When have asked them, and why has, and is it just a blanket, no, when you're asking, or?
It's still trying to get access to the schools for, for our, uh. Critical response. When the police department responds to the school for a critical response.
Yeah, that's a different thing than, you know, renting out a gym.
I'm not talking about where you feel.
Well, well, that's what.
I'm talking about the townspeople. The community, these people haven't used the, the school for elections and not being able to use. There are, there are a lot of issues that people are talking about, but, you know, why, why are we paying so much to the school system if the town isn't even able to use school?
Well, we do use the schools for our elections. I mean, our biggest problem is, is how do we have classes during those times because. We've had, and this may be a good question, chief, I, I can't answer this for a moment, but I know that in other towns. We have had chiefs come to us and tell us that we have to close a school because we cannot. Tell a community member that they cannot have and access their right to vote if they have some sort of limitation for near to have access.
And I agree, but there, there are certain circumstances, you know, certain buildings, um.
Sure.
Have different requirements because of the layout of it, you know, um.
Well, we still have to protect the children. And if they, if we can't say, you know. Betty Sue or Billy Bob can't have access to the building, therefore they can't assert their right to vote, which they have everybody to do. Then we can't, we either have to close the school and then we have challenges with families because. We have to close the school and that's a remote day or a no school day.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken.
No, I mean, I, I'm happy to talk about it separately. I was just really surprised because. I've had a lot of people ask me about this very thing, will reach out to me about this very thing about use of schools and. We have community members use the schools all the time. And so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how much the barrier is. An election.
I think people will have feelings anyway, once the jury puts that, and just probably just a communication issue.
It's all on the board websites for policies. I mean, it's use, use of facilities. There's an application, a document to fill out, there's. I mean, if you're a five oh one three C, you can access it through screen. If you're a private organization and you wanna use it for. A private thing, there is a fee for, you know, cleaning. I mean, there's, that's, that's it. I mean, we're not absorbing if that's, somebody wants to have a wedding or. Whatever, we've done different things for use of these spaces. Anyway, I'm happy to talk about it. It's serious.
Just to pull this back into the issue of. We have, we got off the trail. Uh, we have a meeting this Friday. Uh, where we will be, uh, discussing the feasibility. It's just a feasibility stage discussion. Of, uh, putting a proposal, uh, in front of this board and the school board. Uh, for the potential, and, and also collaborating with the. Um, snowmobile club because they're stakeholder in the process. Uh, of potentially bringing them and having, uh, um. If there are any costs, and we don't even know the cost might be, but there are some state funds available. Uh, do you pay for some of the costs of, uh, trails? Behind school. If you're interested, come, hey, bud, right in the ring, right here. Thank you.
Yeah, when we all wound up about the RSU property, that used to be a cross-country trail they had to abandon it, cause it was a swamp. I ran that cross-country trail up. They brought the roads pretty much except around the athletic fields for cross-country, cause that's all swamped down there.
Right.
It was very distracting for. No, it's all swamped down there.
I'm very excited. Thanks, appreciate the clarification.
Joel, so I am the chair of the, I'm the president of the water association. This board was for previously, the construction on Main Street was pushed off to twenty-five. Wrong. If you break them down sometime, you should. I do not tell you which end. It would be somewhere between Clementopon and Cat. Oh, yeah, we'll pick up in front of you how it's. But we will reconnect if you're already connected. Also, you mentioned Senator Collins' office. I think I sent just the information, but the water association has a meeting with Representative, Senator Collins' office.
Yes. I think we're meeting, we have a, a brief conversation too about other town issues, but yeah.
Yeah.
I can't have requests that they have a meeting for awards or is trying to coordinate with that. I think it's the same person. I think it's Allison. You had one too, right?
Yeah.
She's, she's been reaching out to everybody.
Yeah, I totally, it's not a case, sorry. Um, so, her recommendation. I actually am here to talk about the sidewalk on, um, Pleasant Street that ends in front of my house. Um, I know that there has been some really substantial work and great effort with redoing sidewalks and. Building new sidewalks and allowing for access to pedestrians and walking their dogs or. building new sidewalks and allowing for access to pedestrians and walking their dogs or whatever the case is. Um, and I think, you know, at some point, it would be really beneficial for the town to consider redoing the sidewalk on Pleasant Street and expanding it and making a connection over to Maple. Because, and again, for a variety of reasons, is that you're not backtracking, you can actually find a walkway path that goes all the way around. Uh, but there's also new homes that are beyond me that are building. And if, I mean, you may not remember, um, but I think it was in maybe the twenty-one, twenty-two academic year when we were dealing with distancing and bus rides. The district put in, the RSU two district put in a policy that anybody that lived within one point two miles of the school and had sidewalks needed to walk to school, and we were no longer taking buses. So my kids lost that opportunity to take buses. We have a lot of kids in town that you see now walking to and from school. But even on that road, I actually had to go find the name of the road, Gray Mill Road. So if you're coming down Maple, all those have been, some of them have been re-done. The walkway, there's no walkway at Gray Mill that goes around to Pleasant, and then it doesn't even go all the way down. The other thing, and I wish the gentleman here, and I apologize for not knowing his name, the gentleman from Public Works, he made some really good comments and impacted me. Um, you know, we first moved here, I didn't know there was a sidewalk in front of my house until about five years ago. And we actually found it trying to locate some property lines. And we spent forever, like almost a week of me and my kids, literally going down about four inches because we thought it was grass. Grass had grown over it, about four inches of dirt and gravel and weeds and all this other stuff. And we found the wa, there was a sidewalk in front of my house. And, um, you know, over time, you know, when I had brought it up before, because this is a long time ago, I don't know, Doug might have been the only one here at that point. Um, you know, there were going to be some efforts to upkeep the sidewalks and take care of them, and that hasn't occurred on Pleasant Street. You, my sidewalk now in front of my house is not clear again. It is growing over. We try to keep track, but, you know, we've lost track in our own business. Um, but you can't get through to my house to, um, uh, John has a house that we just, is rebuilding next to me and they're doing. And you can't, you can't walk through that way. So people are constantly walking down the road. And that goes to the speed. I, there may not be speed problems coming down one thirty-five, but if you hit from where Gray Mill Road is down, they, I mean, they fly. They don't put their brakes on until they're pretty much to the general storm. And that is a problem. And I've, I've, I've been hit almost twice, just going across to my mailbox. And so that's just difficult, you know, when you don't have a sidewalk and people are walking by with their dogs. So I guess my point is that at some point in the future, if you can put in the strategic plan, if you're looking at sidewalks, to really look at redoing that sidewalk on our, you know, on the, I don't know if it's the north, I don't know. East, west, south, wherever. But on the side where there's current sidewalk, just to redo it and consider expanding it to connect it over Gray Mill and somewhere on, to Maple Street. That, you know, to be safer for people within the town area community, especially our kids and the people that are walking in the house. So that's one. My, one other second thing, just because I saw it on the agenda, and I don't know if we'll have an opportunity to talk when you um, talk about the, um, remaining old academy fundings. I can't remember specifically what that included, but if that includes, does that include grounds or is it just brick and mortar that goes in? Does that, the grounds too? So, you know, and I don't know what's going to happen with this building or how it's going to move forward. But if there is a determination of that something else needs to be used for the money, you know, one of the things to consider would be the grounds to, you know, do something with it, because if I remember right, this property or that part of the property has to remain in perpetuity because of the federal grant that was provided in order to make that a playground. And I'm not saying that it has to remain a playground. I don't believe that's the case. But I do believe it has to remain in perpetuity for park, you know, use. And it might be helpful to have that be some sort of, you know, skate park or redo the playground or do something with it so that people had access to utilizing that. Because if not, you're not going to be able to do much with it because the process takes years to get that converted back. And that was from conversations eons ago when we were talking about what to do, um, with the renewed stuff. So just something to consider again on how to use that because it's kind of really sad to see some of this access not used for, you know, the town use in recreation.
We have a separate plan for that, so.
Well, that may be, sorry, Rachel.
We do. Yep, and Steve Eldridge has worked with us extensively and worked with, um, Donny Bets, uh, who they didn't buy, I don't remember. I'll bet sweep for that. And we worked with a landscape architect and had a whole thing with that, so.
Just looking at the funding. So thank you, I appreciate it.
And there are those instructions, obviously.
Yeah.
This playground there, I don't know, right, that'd be.
There are, yes.
Yeah, my house, that's the challenge.
Any other public help?
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, uh, consider the use of the remaining old academy project funding. You got a meeting this week. It was, this subject was tabled for tomorrow. And then, we'll put it out the table with you.
Yes, because, um, last week being a holiday and when you try to get pricing and things like that, especially during holidays. Construction manager doesn't have all the numbers yet for us, so we don't have a complete. We don't, who's working towards that and just waiting for responses to, um, assign the numbers.
I'm going to see a wire. We could, you know, just put everything in the little slot in sentences.
So we're waiting for the final numbers to get the building buttoned up and see where that brings us with the remaining project. We'll set up. Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't know what you meant.
Yeah.
So is the plan to just continue work on it, close it up and just continue work or?
Well, we want to continue working as long as we have, um, money to, to do that. That is our hope as the building committee. And the donations, um, are coming in, so we're going to use our donations as well. And, um, you know, we're actively writing grants. Stephen, Steve's been working on one today and he and I are meeting on Monday to look at where we're going next. So, you know, that's an ongoing process, so.
I think it's a good idea that, that you have, um, this possibility of buttoning up yet. You have that budget in mind.
Well, that's. Well, exactly. That's what we're doing. We've been talking about this for over a year now. So we have been making plans and we hoped, you know, the money would be there, but it isn't. So we're making plans of how we're going to button it up and meet the sync and talking with our, uh, construction managers about trying to plan for them when we do have the money that we can hopefully bring them back on board and not lose them because they've been an incredible team to work with. So. So I made the motion to retable, um, the remaining old academy and project funding.
Slowly go to the next.
Yeah, um, I would think that the group, uh, who were trying to renovate the old building, should look clearly that the townspeople don't want to put any more taxpayer money in. And they should have a clear plan presented to this board of how they're going to come up with seven hundred thousand and how much it finishes them. And if they don't have a clear plan, there's no clear end in sight for them. But I think that has to be looked at very closely, whether the project is actually feasible based upon, can they raise that kind of money? I would, it doesn't look like it is.
Well, that's one man's opinion, and we've been working our butt off at this for three years. And we have definitely made great strides. So I, we do have a plan. And Steve and I have been working on it consistently.
In, in three years, we've raised seventy thousand dollars.
So.
So at that rate, it would take thirty years to raise.
Well, so in that also, we were working on writing grants then, because we had no architect studies, we had nothing at that point. Talking about from when we first put it on the board.
And then the second part is, we'll be looking at what to do with the remaining money. Uh, this talk about having to heat the building. Well, if there is no water in the building, I don't understand. I mean, people, the main, they drain their bikes and go to Florida to winter, like, they don't heat their home. I, I would question why you would have to heat building that has no water or anything that could freeze in it. Uh, you'd see you just could close it up and be sufficient for the opening and heating.
I'm pretty sure you were here at the last meeting where we heard an explanation that an unheated building, uh, it's not healthy for the building, especially if it's a building with masonry. And we have the potential for frost heat, to have the D damage given masonry, which is. Six figures on it. It's, we're still.
I hope it's part of the plan that you do not hook the sewer and water. If you do, you're going to incur quarterly charges. There is no budget set to maintain that building.
The sewer's.
If you're going to heat it, there's no budget set to heat the building. If you're going to have a special town meeting, you're probably going to have to come up with a budget to maintain the building. Because there is no taxpayer voter-approved budget to maintain the building. So keep the water sewer up. Or you don't incur those charges.
Like I said, the sewer is hooked up, that there's no water hooked up, so there's no water going into the sewer.
Well, if you put the sewer in, you're still going to pay. If you have a private house and you shut the water off, you pay ninety-five dollars a month to the sewer still. You're going to incur a charge from the sewer district based on how many people can use the building, even though there's no water there.
So are we getting the bill?
No, but I'm not, I'm not clear after what, I think what's done up here means it used to be connected to the building. Now it may be on this, still, which we're already changing. I'm not, I'm not.
Whether, whether it's a separate account or whether it's in this.
I know it's not a separate. It may be, it may be on this one, but this one doesn't, the bill that comes out of this building, it's not private compared to the other deals that we get, so. But there is, like Chris is saying, there is no water going into it, so, you know, sewer. This is the account holder because it's all one property, just then all the way to the playground is the border. It's all one property. That building doesn't, it's all addressed, yeah. It's considered, this is all considered one, one thing on the tax man, multiply this whole property.
And that's not how the sewer.
Still the school.
Because I've fought that battle for the last eight years. I have an in-law apartment that was built into my house that the town does not consider a separate apartment because you can only access it from the inside. And I get, hey, I get billed for two, even in one sewer line, one sewer pipe, one sewer connection, all coming from within one in my house, in my house. And I have to, I get charged two quarterly bills under one of my row and residence for two.
Right, I understand that, but I'm telling you, I sign every utility bill this town now.
Oh, and I appreciate that.
There's a lot of bill in that building right there.
Right, I appreciate, that's why I appreciate.
State or not, I'm not telling you that, I don't know.
Well, I appreciate that because it is really problematic.
Right.
Because we're looking at, again, more increases.
There's somewhere in there that you can be paid. Ken, I believe you just said that, um, if, you mean, if they don't keep the building in that, that it's going to be susceptible to frost heat and that. So is that implied that the building is not structurally sound?
That is not true.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking for some.
We had a, a basically contractor sits on our board, sits on our committee. And when masonry buildings go a long time without heating, the, um, mortar has water in it. Mortar wicks water, takes water in, and the longer it goes unheated and stays um, untreated, they call it, the more damage that can happen. That building is structurally sound. The engineering reports on it have been wonderful. That was the best part of the building, and that's why.
I'm just trying to interpret what Ken said.
And so simply, and I'm not pretending to be the expert here, I'm simply quoting what was stated at our meeting two weeks ago when the building committee was here, they were very clear. They thought it was important because we've made a six-figure investment in restoring that masonry. That we heat the building to a fifty-degree temperature to preserve the investment that we just made in those masonry suits.
Dan. So I've been listening to this on, I figured out how to do the YouTube thing, which I hope a lot of people learn that and make the wild dog thing and stuff. But, uh, originally I, I voted for the school to have that work. But what I didn't, I can't understand is, uh, did we not have a contract, a set contract, a set, that somebody bid for? That they said the completion would be done with that money, or did we just freewill of it?
It was not a contracted number. It was a spitball number that, you know, was come up with from the reuse committee. The reuse committee came up with that number, and that's the number that the, went on to be warned for that year. There was no building committee at that time because there wasn't any building with them. And the, as we've said multiple times, the demolition was almost five hundred thousand dollars. So that came right off the top of the money that was broken.
So I would just kind of wonder, I mean, before they started the demolition, you got new figures and stuff like that, before we started anything. Maybe that's one, you could have went back, maybe you would have got more money.
And the architect has said multiple times, and he said it last two weeks ago, that and the cost increases and labor costs and everything that we've experienced in the past three years not have happened. The percentage we're short is the forty percent of labor costs and material costs then happened. That is officially right there.
Now they keep saying five hundred thousand. Nobody mentions that the net proceeds from the sale of the Hittrell School was applied to the demolition.
So we only borrowed one point five and not one point seven. So that was, that's what happened. It was two hundred thousand dollars from the Hittrell School.
Well, keep reminding people that the money from the Hittrell School sale went to the demolition.
Thirty thousand dollars of the Hittrell School sale went to playground equipment and.
It, it seems that there's, uh, a lot of taxpayers that want to see the, the rest of the funding, um, go into this project that was previously approved. And there's another group of taxpayers that say, I don't want to spend any more money. And it makes sense to me, we're going to talk about having, um, a special election to pass articles that failed, and it makes sense to me to put this back to the taxpayers and see what they want to do with that remaining money. Um, and that'll put a test, whether it gets spent or doesn't get spent. And I think the taxpayers, even the people that say, I don't want to spend all that money, are still of the mind that we need to button it up, and there are some expenses that we're still going to incur. But it just makes sense to me to have people vote on it, if we're going to have an election.
In, in my fear in all of this, regardless of how I feel about the project, we are entering a slippery slope here. We are setting a precedence of money that was appropriated and voted on. And then we're looking at stopping that appropriation and pulling it back. And that is a slippery slope. So I feel that, I feel that, you know, once money's been appropriated and voted on and the project is underway, um, you know, one of the other odd things I mentioned is how, you know, what if somebody said, I want in my really pay, and I'm not happy that Will, um, Packard and Gilney pay. So I don't want that money going out of there. So those are the things that, if we open the door and look back at the previous board and saying, we're putting this on the board, how does that appear? You know, we're, we're questioning. You know, we're, we're questioning warrants that were put together by the previous school. And for as many people as have been against it, I have letters that people have been sending in for, that they want to see the project moved forward with the money that was originally appropriate.
And I would counter that to say that this is a unique, it's, uh, example, a unique situation where it, to a lot of the taxpayers that I've talked to, it was not, it's not what it was presented as. Um, the use of the building is what we were sold as the use of the building. It's not actually being voted for.
Really?
Yeah.
But it.
Well, it was my understanding and a lot of people I talked to that we would be able to rent it out for events.
You will, you will.
But it's not big enough for events.
Yes, it is.
Um, the last I heard was, according to the prior code, it was only in front of the, like, it was forty-five.
That's not true. That's not true. So much misinformation.
Well, you guys need to put out some information.
In fact, we've got our whole website that has all that information on it with the schematics and the building plans and the, and the, um, occupancy.
Because you know, there's no, uh, travel or what's it, this is the purpose of the building, what it's going to be specifically used for.
And we've been very public about that. It's going to be used for rentals. You're going to be able to vote there. We are going to be able to have meetings there. People will be able to use it for recreation.
So you may want to clarify that with the public because it's not there.
It's, it's all right out there and we have a Facebook page as well. So, and it's all on the Facebook page.
I was talking about, I'd read your lesson, and from what I went through, it's not specifically stated what the purpose of the building will be. So I think a lot of people are guarded about putting more money into a situation or stopping and saving money from a situation where it's not going to be usable and usable. So that's, I think, where a lot of the confusion and concern is. The, your other concern about the slippery slope, again, this is a unique situation. People don't want to continue putting money into it, but they consider a white elephant if that money could be used usefully elsewhere in building a rec program.
You can't, you cannot take that money and appropriate for something else after it's been appropriated. It cannot be, that is, you will.
It, but that was the only point of the special election to consider is what my understanding was.
No, the, the, the one alternative to spending the money on construction would be to simply pay down debt and freeze things where they are.
Okay.
No problem.
Got you. Thank you.
Yes, Ben.
So Mark, I really appreciate your, your comments. Uh, this is an issue that is quite divisive. That's, and I am a project manager, I could. And one of the most difficult things you have to do as a project manager is to recommend a total project. So I understand what you're saying, Kristen, about it being a slippery slope. However, I think that it's important to really get the, the town as a whole to weigh in. Is this something we wish to continue putting money into? Are we ever going to get to the place where we have usable products? And I think that that's the concern. And as a taxpayer, if we need another seven hundred thousand dollars, thus far seventy thousand dollars has been raised in donations. And it was my understanding too as well that the bulk of this was to be funded by grants and donations. That hasn't come to fruition yet. If we don't have, if there's no significant level of confidence that we're going to get there, I think we need to really take a look and see do the townspeople want to continue to use this money to put more effort in just to button it up and wait for funds to come in. So that's, so Mark, I, I appreciate your sentiment that if there has to be a special election, let's put it out there and see what the will of the people is.
Can I just say one more thing? Yeah, when I go report, I thought that was a finished price. I mean,
As did I.
That, no more.
And so we.
I, I, I know contracts.
They didn't have a contract. I know. It was time and materials. It was great, I mean.
I did a little, uh, research on what the selectmen's responsibility is with issues like this. And I got into a book on town meeting formal government, and it said, the board of selectmen ultimately has the producer responsibility to monitor town spending by reviewing, by including input. And I can do that every meeting. So in this case, you know, you have the responsibility to act in the best we can try. You don't have to spend all the money. You have to make sure that property has a real responsibility. So you do have the right to not spend money or not approve it if it's pending.
No. I mean, it's your choice.
But people have already voted.
Yep. By my, well, when you, what, what the, what the town meeting does, legislative body, they authorize the appropriation or the raising of that money. You at any point instruct me, cut the police. No, no offense to the chief.
Tell me.
That police department, but it's going to be what the town people approve. My job is to get rid of the police officers. You have that authority. You can do that with any project. You can do that with any, any department. These are your, this is your town that you act as the executive of, and I very know from administrative position what you ask me to do. That's my role.
Excellent.
Yes. Those are the provisions of the board.
Yes. I'd like to take issue with what Mr. Burge said about, uh, the articles that are not, if we have another election. Um, so many times if we have this, the voters already voted. They, they told you what they would approve. They told you what they did not approve of. And we're going to have a regular, another election every month until the different results we want? I don't think that's what the job. The voters said that these specific articles, like, um, the fiscal year operating budget failed. The, the voters don't want to spend that much. I don't know how you can make it any clearer than the majority of the people that voted said, no, we do not want to spend that.
Any more money. They don't want to spend any new money. So it doesn't, the article that was voted down had nothing to do with the money that was appropriated, appropriated in two thousand and twenty-one. This article.
I guess I jumped the gun here, but it's item number seven to approve fiscal year twenty-five operation budget approved to approve with fiscal twenty-five operating budget article that failed in the election. And I don't, I don't know how you have an authority to do that.
It's, it's our responsibility, like our administration budget did not pass. And we can revert to last year's budget to continue to operate the town.
Yep.
But we need to put something back before the voters, um, to get approval. It's like you hear, Lewis just voted three times on this new budget. So the first time the vote didn't pass, they don't say, well, we'll just run it on last year's budget. They have to go back to the voters and get approval.
That, that is correct. But how many times you go back?
As many times as it takes to get it, get it right or get it.
Well, so, you know, are you going to go back with the same amount? Or do you go back with adjusted amounts, which are something resistant from the amount you're asking?
That's the discussion tonight when it hits to that idea. That's, that's what they're going to instruct me to do, whether to change those numbers or not. One of them is the debt service article. We are, we have indebted to town. We have debt payments to make. It's like missing your mortgage. We have to get that article approved. It, it didn't pass. Other than that, we're going to default on one of our loans. That's what, that's what the union wants to do. Certainly, they can do that, but it's probably, it's, it's not responsible for this board to not put that back before the voters again. Understand that we already have taken out these laws and we have to make things. Right now, we don't have enough money to do it based on last year's budget. So we have to put that back. So that's just one example. But they haven't gotten there yet. So I think that's, uh, I'm not sure if you guys are ready to move from the gathering.
It's actually scary. Okay. And, uh, so if you want to. So the motion is stable for our next meeting. So. And so. I need to. The question was, is, is that something that happens? Able to, this, uh, issue again. I think that all of the, they are. Also, thank you.
One or a thousand. It's not, it's not a gray zone. And you need to pass through there. When one of the police officers just stopped you and said, we're going thirty-five on a twenty-five zone. And I was only doing thirty-four. That doesn't make it.
I've heard of them.
Don't have ten miles.
But I know they teach. I want fifteen.
Oh, I'm just under it, whatever that.
Twenty-six and twenty-five, which way?
Anyway, we'll go on to considering options for proving physical year twenty-five operating budget.
So the, the articles that I'm kind of laying before tonight are three that, well, there's, there's three operating articles that feel missing. There's the administration budget, which, which includes the, it includes coenforcement assessing the town office staff, the building with the town office and all of the important that. Health insurance, the ironing, all of the workers' comp, all our municipal insurances for all our buildings. That's all part of the administrative budget. So that's one, that's one part. The second one is the recreation budget, which clearly from the signs around town, there was an affirmative action to try to get last year's budget, uh, which was a higher amount, so that would be, so it's, it's an increased amount from what you proposed to, to the voters at that time. Um, if you're, if you do consider doing express election, I would just put that back for them, uh, potentially whatever level you want. If you want to go to the level that it seems clear that the voters wanted it to be at a higher level. Put that back before them so they get firm, they say yes, instead of lying on the article, very full, which is the version of last year's budget. And the third one is the, is the debt service article, which is, um, it's not very short, it's just a little bit short for what it was in one of our debt service items. Um, the SCBA, which is the respirator equipment for the fire department, that loss. So when you, when you put together a budget, I have to put the money that would be necessary to fund new borrowing, um, in the debt service payments. So because none of the new borrowing, none of the new capital items pass, that is not as far off as it would be given us. Because they didn't really the police cruiser, the salt shed and, and the academy borrowing. That article isn't that far off with that one item that sell off, so it's really not that. There's, there's a small gap there. Um, those are the three, um, operating items that I think you should consider. The last one is one I don't have a solid answer for you tonight. I've been putting phone tag with the manager of the Jellystone campground. That, um, article also failed to, to use the, the rebate money from the custom all HVAC project to give us, we're, we're like thirty-five thousand short because the car no longer damn project, um, was more expensive than we anticipated. So we're thirty-five thousand short finishing that project and we've already purchased the cover. So we're, we're already a hundred thousand in and if we don't approve the additional money or we don't have the ability to, we're gonna lose a hundred fifty thousand dollars straight across the state. So if you don't want to do that, I just want, I just want to make sure of this. Those are kind of the four that I see are the important ones for you to at least consider. Um, and if you got any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
As far as the funding for the covert, um, would it be appropriate to absolutely back from using the fund balance?
Sure, that's what, yeah, so, um, when you think about that particular project, there were, there were two items that you were trying to use the rebate running for custom hall. Both of those, both of those articles failed, so that nearly a hundred thousand dollars that we get back into rebate will now fall into the unsigned fund balance. Um, so effectively you'd be doing the same thing at the end of next year when we get that track deal calling the unsigned fund balance. We certainly have a purpose at the moment. And then if you appropriated it back out of there, it basically replenishes itself. That's up to you.
Are there any changes to the administration budget that, that you're discussing that we're changing the figures?
Sure. So that's a question. That's a good question. Um, I guess the, the largest, um, the largest thing in the, in the administration budget salves, which will being and, and it goes benefits, the benefits and things you can't, um, do a heck of a lot with because all of the collective bargaining, um, collective bargaining contract for the union employees, uh, their benefits and health insurance and all that is funded out of the administration. Where generally all that will fall, it will fall on town office. It's the only, it's the only place that I can go. So the, one of the initiatives in that budget is no, make one of the, um, people in front office full-time. That's, that's seventeen thousand dollar savings. You don't want to do that. Um, basically the, the only other option in that, in that pool of, um, money is to, is to do the furlough days. So maybe we should be shutting down the town office for a certain amount of days throughout the year to try to make whatever budget cuts that are appropriate.
Would be real nice. Essentially. So we get to.
For the people that work in front office, yes.
And service that the town.
Correct. That's really the only place I can go in the case of savings I've already. I have some preliminary numbers that working on, asking me to start putting this together. Um, I've, I've cut the line that you traditionally use to give, um, Christmas, um, gifts to employees and stuff like that. There's some, there's some small things I can do, but most of the administrative budget, if you will, is kind of baked into the cake if I don't, if I don't close the town office, because that's just where the staff is our, our, our assessing agent is a contract employee. Our code officer is a contract employee. I can't do a lot with those people. So I have to, it just falls on the operating, you know, the town office is probably the only place that I can make any significant.
I don't think the townspeople are gonna be happy with fewer hours at the town office. If anything, the people are constantly asking me why it's not over on Fridays and they have a lot of training that they need to, to do. Um, and yesterday was one of those training days. Um, so that makes it a three, a three-day week that you can go in and do business of, um, and, and the, the, both of the position out front, that's part-time that we wanted to make full-time, um, with the workload that they had most. Um, in my opinion, that position should stay funded full-time.
I should, I should also mention the two other, just, I don't want to. The two other areas was, um, there's, there's the remainder of the comprehensive plan contract, which is about twenty-four thousand dollars. It was in the board, the committees, that's paid for company's plans to finish that part of the. Right, that's part of the boards and committees and elected officials, folks, is also under that, is under that general heading. Um, the, the planning board had asked to, um, hire the person who's doing our comp plan as our planner, so they had kind of all the technicals, um, um, assistance in that area, that was in there. There's no contract for that, so that's an area I can, I can save some money if, if you don't want to fund that. And the other, um, area was I, I budgeted two years for the audits in next year. So if you would, if you would like to stay one year behind again, there's another probably fifteen, eighteen thousand you can remove from that audit line. Project trying to be as transparent as I can with the big items, so the rest of it's really small stuff that I can, I could save, you know, five, six, seven hundred here and there, for whatever, but it's, it's not gonna add up through budgets by any means.
I think getting the audits thought up has been not enough goals. And I think that having Isabel on initiative comprehensive plan, which is important, and also having her work with the planning board is important. Those, those items can, you know, on our radar a lot.
Well, under Article thirty-four, administrative funds, we can go back to what was passed in twenty twenty-three. That's a sixty-three thousand. Can you make up the sixty-three that I went?
By closing the town office.
That's no way.
I think so. I, um, I don't want to say that with certainty, there's certainly a certain amount of, of, of things that I believe, that we can make adjustments on as the year goes on. And I obviously don't know what fuel prices are gonna be this winter and all, all those kinds of things. But there's certainly a certain amount of that that we can make up by just reducing our spending in certain areas. Um, but there are a lot of initiatives kind of in this budget that, that we've kind of done deliberately, kind of committed ourselves to. For example, a new website, having, being able to put like the banners across the top and updating the calendar thing. That new website is more expensive than it was last year. The text alert system that we did, that's three or four thousand dollar extra that was put in, did the administrative budget to try to stop using them. Um, so there are certain things that we've already signed contracts for that we built into. So all I'm trying to say is the only, the thing that I can insistently tell you that I control is the number of hours that the people in the town office work. And I can save money quickly doing that. I'm not saying we're gonna be, you know, only open three days a week. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to scare anyone. I'm just trying, generally, if you look at like what the, what the state does or what other communities do, and you are in this situation, you try to build around your furlough days, around holidays, so that the staff at least feels like they get something, you know. They're losing money, but then their three-day weekend turns into a boarding or something like that. You know, that's kind of the way the state is, and that, that's how I would envision that to kind of go. That's, that's the direction in giving, I just made some sense of whether you want to put, what you want me to put together and I can, I can bring those details to you in the meeting, the public hearing, certainly.
Uh, use on the other side, fund balance. To, uh, finance. To immunity tax.
Yep. You certainly could do a special election and you could haul, you could, uh, have the taxpayers, taking all of the, all of the additional funds that are necessary, fund whatever, whatever the items are that you feel are the ones to put forward. And you could take that all out of the unsigned. So like you, when the taxpayers decide.
Well.
And if you did that, it wouldn't be part of the tax.
What is the, what is the gap on that sum?
I think it's like around twenty thousand bucks. I'm trying to do that off the top of my head right now. I'm looking at it today, but, but that's not gonna be, that's not gonna quite reflect it right now, because that has, that has the new stuff that I'm giving down, the cruiser and all that stuff that didn't get funded. So I had to redo that number.
Well, I mean, I, this is completely back to the envelope. But, um, I think I heard you say it was a sixty thousand dollar difference in the admin budget in one. Sixty-three.
If you funded everything.
Yep. And I heard you say, memory serves, I think the recreation budget would be, you're still an additional thirty. And the debt service is twenty thousand.
Yep.
Yeah. And there's thirty-five thousand for the Jellystone covert, which, uh, still needs to be funded. And so we're looking at a hundred and forty-five thousand.
Yes.
And at the same time, there's a hundred thousand automatically reverting to the unsigned, uh, fund balance from the rebate for the custom hall. We know that that's gonna hit the unsigned fund balance at some point. So the net would therefore be a forty-five thousand dollar difference. See if we can deal with that. Uh, one advantage of doing that would be the, uh, we wouldn't necessarily have to incur the cost of a, of a special election. And we could wrap that into an election, a November election, that would come after we lock the annual tax rate and after we send out the bills and all of that. Could we, could we last until that time?
Absolutely. We have a, we have a, we have a healthy, we have a healthy assigned fund balance and our headcount hasn't had money to make payments on, on all of these items until there was a special town. All that I would, um, suggest is that if you were, if I might, is I would just suggest that you just, if you want to have a special town meeting, that we don't have to run it through the ballot chains, we can do hand counts. I would not recommend that we hand count ballots if you're gonna do it during presidential, because there's gonna be too many people. And we'll be here until six in the morning. And, um, we can put together a, a special town meeting election in thirty to forty-five days. If that, if that's what you want, we will make the ballots ourselves, they will be hand counted at the end of the night. And we can get that done and it won't cost us the three or four or five thousand dollars that it does to make the ballots, um, through the state's ballot system. Basically, we have to send that out so that those machines can, can read them. We can do it on our own, um, but I wouldn't recommend doing that. Uh, I don't think that Donna will ever, ever volunteer to be a ballot clerk again if you make her any kind of ballots on the presidential.
So if we, if we, what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is that we wait for the presidential election. There's no way to automate, there's no way to turn these into scannable ones.
Oh, no, no, we can't. It's just that, that's the biggest expense is us turning them into scanned ballots.
And so it's less expensive actually to do a special election hand counted, because we don't have to convert them to scanned, um.
Right, we print.
Friendly.
We will make them on a word document, print them in the town office. That's, that's the question for you folks. So I gave you the four that I thought were the, the ones that, uh, what I consider to be the problems. Um, everything else, you know, they didn't, they don't want to prove that, they don't want to, the voters don't want the salt shed, they don't want the police cruiser. You know, this stuff isn't gonna, you can put it back before them next year during the, during the normal, uh, process. But those are the four that I kind of, um, outlined that I think are part of, are the problems at the moment.
Without, well, the, the cruiser.
I think the, the, the cruiser is the minimum of the problems we have. Um, I put extra money into the maintenance account, in case the cruiser didn't go through. We just put twenty-eight hundred dollars into the regular cruiser that has a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand miles on, to place the exhaust system in it. We can make, do with what we have and build things like things that.
Lord, I'd like to speak up for the employees in the town office. They deserve what was proposed. The longer you wait, the more they lose. You don't want to get yourself in a position like Harrison where all the entire town office but one wall. There are demands for those people who know how to work in municipal offices in different towns and bigger towns that may pay more. As an employer, the quality of the employer is sort of judged by how you treat your employees. So I think that we should move forward as expeditiously as we can to try and get our town office staff taken care of and to increase hours. It's very difficult to get in there at times, and now taxes are gonna be coming when people are gonna be stacked up in there. It's not a very private place to conduct business with the town employees at the counter. So let's get moving. Let's stop procrastinating and get moving. I like what the town manager is proposing. We really don't have a swimming budget. It was overwhelmingly voted down. Now, maybe it's your opinion that they were depending on Article thirty-four, we never should do that. I think Article thirty-four should disappear of our court, because it allows you to override the wishes of the voters. But let's get moving and take care of our employees.
The administration budget was almost fifty-fifty, it was three forty-two to three sixty-nine. Um, and I think if just a few people realize, if we're gonna cut the budget, then this is what's gonna happen. I think they'll understand in the past, I do prove.
Yeah. So that goes along with, I brought you earlier about the communication thing. I got lucky, my neighbor told me about YouTube, so I could start watching what was going on, look back what happened, see all that. So signage, maybe, you know, even right there, I mean, we're at the town office, how to get onto the YouTube thing. Uh, I asked Justin how to get onto the town, uh, website, he told me that was nice, you know. Something out there that tells people how to get on there, because like I told a few people, probably my grandkids set up my phone, my cell phone. So I don't Facebook, a lot of people don't Facebook. So there's other avenues, they even know the other avenues. I do that all the time. Maggie did help me. And I, well, you remember Maggie, that's why I went for that, for that building in the first place, with my two kids went there. And I thought realistically, I thought it was a final number, I never thought you guys would find what you were aiming to, that's crazy.
Um, so, and I'm trying to get back to my thoughts, I was just chuckling so much about that whole reset type of sound. I, what is the cost of having a special election? And I, I ask that because there's costs associated with it. I would think, and I, and I don't know, so in my head, anecdotally, I think if you're gonna have staff in county ballots, that's gonna take way more time than the cost of putting a stand ballot together. Yeah, I see Donna shaking her head, Donna, I love you and I trust you, so I believe that. I guess I don't.
It's only three or four questions, it won't, it won't take them very long. If we did our annual town election like that, thirty-six questions, they'd be there all night long if we didn't score. But if they only have three or four, if they only have three or four questions to do, it shouldn't take them that long.
And I appreciate that, because, you know, clearly building scannable forms is not really what I know, so thank you. But I mean, there is a cost to, there are costs to have an additional election. So is, is that necessary if we can have a November election and that's coming up? Because the budget does move through. And I'm, I'm one, to be honest, without an opinion for any of the others, I was really stunned and sad with the administrative budget didn't pass, because I don't think people understand what goes into that. I'm just looking at it from an R S and two perspective, we did the same thing when we go through ours and we do our articles and man, this is allocated to teaching, this is allocated to administration. It's really hard to understand, because even though our budget went up, it went up solely based on negotiated salaries and legal stuff that we had no control over, insurances. So, I mean, we cut positions to accommodate the stuff that we had absolutely no control over. So I feel for you guys and, you know, on that particular article, you know, it is fifty-fifty, maybe with a little more education or knowledge. The other thing I want to say is I love the new texting thing. So, you know, I appreciate that is out there and if we could get that used for little things like that, you know, to let people notify that their meeting's coming up or that there's a select one meeting or a special meeting or something like that. I have, I received messages and I'm like, oh, that's great. My third thing is Fridays are really hard to have closed, because people get paid on Fridays. And if you have to register your vehicle or do something with the town or do whatever, you need funds to do it. Fridays are really a rough day to have a day off. And I know that it's great for a long weekend, but it's really horrible when you have things to get done. And so maybe there's a way of doing half-days or other things, it just is really challenging. That's it. I won't open my mouth then. From Monmouth. The other towns had very many people showing up. Yeah, I mean, Monmouth didn't have, we did several meetings, we had different town meetings, but then we had a regional meeting. But the town meeting is the Monmouth, only a couple of people showing. And most of the people that showed were board members or teachers. It's true. It's disappointing.
So I swear, this is the last, uh, so with the.
We're just gonna stop talking.
With the, with the vote. We're trying to add that on, with that election, for just that small little eight, nine hundred people or so came in here. This place was, I was surprised when I got out of work, it was still packed, so if they keep, if they add another thing in there, I can imagine when, well, we got about thirty-six hundred people or so that vote higher that, somewhere on one of these days. So it would add too much, I need to have it either before or a little after.
Right, so what John has mentioned, that you have to be very poor questions, you're in the booth for a really long time. When you come in and you vote, you know, for governor or president, whatever, it's six questions. You have to be, you know, seven pages, it takes you a long time. They kind of occupy the booths for, you know, three times the length that you would normally expect them to, and that's kind of where everything slows down.
Might as well talk first, maybe it was a little bit more background, I don't know, or an old one.
Yep.
I mean, do you want to spend a million dollars on that?
Yep.
And there's no breakdown.
Yep, and I thought about that over, over, on this morning, there were a couple of articles that I got feedback from the board that they wanted me kind of reword them, and we also had a couple that had explanations, but I know that for this community, putting money away to reserve funds is a new thing, it, it had never been done before. I started doing it, so I tried to put an explanation of what that article was about. But I do appreciate that after this election of having like the, the debt service article fail, maybe a couple of sentences that says this pays for stuff that we've already bought, you know? Not to treat people like they're not intelligent, you know, but just to try to say things like that.
The same as you wore.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. These are things we have to take forward. Yep, and I heard that, I heard that from the elected, and I will try to, I'll strive to do better with the folks.
To get back on that and John's comment also about education. I think having that information ahead of time, probably on social media, it's really helpful for young families not to discredit anything. I don't think I've been this person a year, like at least five or six years. And usually my constituent names, I mean, I'm supposed to be there like ten, fifteen years. Um, young families, parents both working, multiple children, it's hard to get to these meetings, it's the rich and outland for us. So having the education out on social media where we get all of our information would be super helpful ahead of time. Not just necessarily like, here's the ballot, but maybe my item, here's what is gonna be, this is the explanation breakdown background. That would be really helpful, so we can be informed before we start the meeting, and at least that must know that.
So what I just kind of need is I need just some, some direction of what it is that you want me to bring back to you, whether you want to have, in the, in the speed in which you want to do this, because, because we don't have an open town meeting, we have to have a public hearing. So if you want me to bring it back for your next meeting to have the public hearing, then I just need some guidance from you folks on those items that I've mentioned or any other items that you, that you may want to have the town reconsider. Um, what you want it to look like. So when I bring back the items for the public hearing, that the information is available to the public ahead of time, and that I can draft, um, in theory, if you agree, if you didn't change anything after the public hearing, you would have the opportunity at that meeting. You could approve the warrant, um, to be posted for the next election. And if you're not ready based on feedback or a pre-agreement amongst yourselves, we could just push it back another couple weeks. I didn't kind of, but you know how much money you want to spend and how quickly you want to get people to be able to decide whether they want to spend that.
I want quick. And I'd like to hear what you've already proposed.
Okay, so.
So I don't know, anybody else?
Well, so we would consider the, the administration.
You, certainly, if you give me some indication, if you would like me to, um. If you would like me to, to, for all making that, um, third person full time, just let me know. Um, and I won't bring that back, that's a, that's a saving seventeen thousand dollars, if that's what you wanna do.
Certainly, we gotta pay our debt.
And certainly we don't wanna put at risk the state grant for the general spending program.
I don't, so. It's a good amount of money, and, uh, at some point, that color is going to let go, and then. We're gonna have to replace it with what there, which was inadequate, because that's all that will be allowed. We won't have a choice at that point, I'll put in the same size holder, that's what the emergency mediation. Um, allows for, for the, the, the street crossing grant, uh, the street crossing replacements, so. Um, if it didn't let go, and we were in that, because we would be, not that we might. Fix it with what there, which has been determined inadequate, and then, I don't. I understand the campground is not necessarily in line with, but, um, there seems to be significant damage.
You're explaining this. On a why. There are a voter, so that they would know what was at stake, you know. Reading this, but, uh, I don't know all norms and stuff, uh, would be very difficult.
Well, I am happy to do my best to write an explanation of what I mean, that's, that, that has not been. That is not any standard practice in Ronstadt, but, um, it's certainly something using your, your document, you can have. Or you can, uh, your own, which is anything that's five you want. It's your, it's your document, you can have that anyway you want. There, there are about, uh, vote. When you don't have an open town meeting, there has to be a representation. Like it hasn't today, it's one, one, but you know. Because the public doesn't have, you know, the question, you know, the town, the state, you know, and they say. Why aren't you doing that? They can't do it while they're voting. Yeah, I think that, I think the three, that the three operating articles, the dad illustration, the. The recreation budget with the group of the, and the debt service. The fourth one is the, is the. Yeah, the beaver brought across and, um, question, those are the four that I would present as the ones that are the most urgent here for consideration.
And I would suggest that, um. We fund them. From the unassigned fund downs. So there's, there's no impact to the capture.
And I have no, uh, anti-confirmed result.
And we're all getting, get already from the school.
Yeah, the, the, the school and the valley alone will equate to one point oh five mils based on last year's. We already won, you know, just for those students, the town didn't do it all. Uh, if the, the town, I'd just say exactly the same as it was last year.
Somehow, I think you're gonna have to, and I agree. And that's exactly the way you could go with the, that's made a fund balance, but you have to somehow. Explain the, um, that is made a fund balance, because the majority of the people in this town don't know that it's already money that we gave you. It's, it's already taxable money sitting there for un, undesigned expenses. If you, you know, something happened, uh, so this is something happened, we can use it. You already made a plan to put most of it back in, uh, to keep that ratio that we, we keep by audit. But I don't know how you'd explain that on a warrant.
Can't really go on the warrant, but we could do some, somehow, we could try to figure out a way to try. Warrant is kind of a, kind of scripted, like I can put explanations about, under each one, what it's relevant to, but. It would be. I think questionable to write a story about it.
Maybe you have to do some, some supplemental information.
You know, yeah, it's good, it's something like that.
Uh, I think it's important to put together these articles and. Uh, and if you look at the administrative budget, people voted down. So I think going to the fund balance, the fun part of that, but. If you went back to people and said we didn't change anything, you know, that might get the Senate going the wrong way. I think you should show some reaction to they voted it down to reduce it, like some. At least they're reduced by this, and they're funding the rest of this, but then you have a greater chance of getting it passed, and I think that's real important. Well, that we have to convince them, but does that really get out there? But, um, that could be, you know, I'm just saying, if you gave them some reduction, but not too much, but you did something, then they would.
People don't know what's in that, in that account. They don't know that that is such a broad thing, it covers so many different things. To, to try to cut any one of those things, though, is gonna, is detriment to the whole thing.
Well, you do weigh the twenty four grand on the comp plan, that's a good start.
Then she can't get her, then she can't get money for the school. Because you need a comp plan within ten years, otherwise you're not gonna get grant money.
They were already five years.
And we're already five years past it.
What does it tell you that comp?
It's any grant. You can't cut that, that's, that's.
So it certainly will not be the same amount, because right when we, as we go through putting. Putting the budget together every year because of our, our timeline, sometimes we make estimates on certain expenses. Now that we're, we moved from, you know, May, June, July, like I have much firmer ideas, so there's, there's little things that I can. I'm certainly playing with the run, but it's not gonna be the same exact number, because it's unnecessary, or some of them have changed, some products have gone. Down, but like we can make those changes at this point, give it something later.
We're six months out from when we first.
Yeah, I mean, when I start giving this stuff to you, it's. I don't know what the fuel is, you know, you know, and now I, I, I know what they are.
The only question I have, if there anyone else on the board that thinks you should put the whole of that funding on. I would like to see the plan. Who, who buttoning up. And I think we can have that conversation the next meeting, but, you know, um. I, I'm concerned that, uh. I, I share the concern about wanting to be careful with. Money that, uh, is not being used just to preserve the goal. I don't wanna do anything that would precipitate killing the project. I think we should, my personal opinion, we should do everything we can as forward to help that project be successful. Um, what I'd like to see the plan, uh, for what, for buttoning up means. Because if after we, uh, buttoned the building. There are still excess funds, I would be willing to keep those funds to continue to use. For the building, or if they should be, uh, used to pay down the debt that was in progress.
And just so you serve it, it's not, it's not a kind of an all or, or some game with this, with this particular item, so. You folks could decide that, that this is the amount, you know, you come back with, with the plan. And whatever that plan is, you guys can decide, and you have the authority at any point, say. Maybe supplementing money and building, decide what we wanna do. You can do that, I just wanna make sure that everybody here understands that that is. Within your right to do that, if you determine that that's the best thing to do, I, I wanna make sure you all understand.
Yeah, and, and it's a controversial, I mean. A lot of folks with very strong opinions one way or another, Mount Mount Academy graduate. Nineteen eighty-five, and I graduated from there, don't.
And I'm certainly not advocating this position, I'm just trying to ensure that you all understand what.
It, it, it seems to be though, that we do, we. We should do, uh, if there are funds that are not required for buttoning up. That we should consider checking with the voting before it's been. So I'd like to see the plans from the voting panel, what buttoning up, and, and what each line item.
We know it's in the works, but it's not like, you know, talking about fun, or know what you're gonna be doing next week. Expecting an answer, but shit's happening in your house, this is. Doing municipal projects, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a side of it. And so many ways, it's not the same, it's to do something in your backyard. I just wanted to know the timeline, I'm sorry, and it's, you're like a special election, I'm trying to think of, you know, how many days? Is there like, you have to, you know, is it forty days, ninety five days, what is the timeline?
So, under, under, under a general, under a general, um, election called by the. Just like the state law requires, thirty days of absentee voting, that's what, that's what drives our timeline. The select board, if they so choose, chose, they could declare an emergency. And that's up to them to decide that, and they could shrink that timeline back. I don't think that we're under a situation where you have to do that, so I think that. Um, they have to hold a public hearing, because again, we don't have an open town meeting, so they have to do a public hearing process, just, just like the.
Yeah, that's what's just I think, yeah, so.
So that would be probably at their next meeting, and if there wasn't a lot of changes, um, suggested by them, they could at the end of that meeting, they could. They could sign a warrant that day, and I could get it posted, you know, Thursday or early the following week, and then we would start counting the thirty day. Absentee balloting process, so it could be done as soon as late August, the election could be, towards the end of August.
That is what I was getting at, so. I guess one of the things that I would ask that folks consider, because I wanna be respectful of the timeline, right? Want to get things done as soon as possible, I get it, with a lot of people in the community that are away during vacations, summers, other things. And to get to a town hearing and to do a vote, I think is not helpful in trying to get this communicated, you know. I know for one, that, and I think, you know, I apologize, Mark, I think maybe I just said it, the administration was really close. I think with a little bit of education and knowledge, and with understanding of what it all means and how all it's passed. Regardless of how people did their voting, I think it would potentially go a long way. And I would hate to think that we have people that are planning on vacations or other things with their families or children over the summer, which had been pre-planned. But then not around for a public hearing or a vote, you know, maybe they could do the absentee ballots and, and then make it a plan. But I just wanna just make sure that, that's just considered, and not trying to rush it so fast, if not necessary. Um, that we miss some key opportunities for people to even be educated or be aware, that's all.
So I would like to make the comment, the longer we wait. If something doesn't, let's say the, the minister did not pass on the, on the special election. That means it's a sort of period of time that they have to make all those cuts.
It's always a fine balance, I wasn't looking to extend it so far out, I was just kind of curious in the head, or it's fine, well, I mean. Because, you know, I think that those things are, are important, you know, whether you do it shorter, because I think there's some opportunity there. It's just trying to figure out, how's it communicate it, how can it work, it's always so easy.
Uh, is there, I, just asking for some thought on what kind of community issues you're gonna put out to people? So if a public hearing is in two weeks, or four weeks, whatever it may be. You need to get more people here, you need to, I think the problem with the budget was that people didn't know. It wasn't effectively communicated to the folks who weren't physically here in, in this room, and that, I think. It's gonna go a long way if you can engage more of the constituents. We're gonna have, I, I think you'll have better this, Steve. And, you know, six o'clock on a Wednesday night, I appreciate where Emily is, because I've been there. But I can tell you that with my personal life at this time, six o'clock on a Wednesday night, it is tough for me, so. You know, we need to figure out how to get the communication, the information out, so that people can make informed decisions. My name's Lucy Jordan. No, no, because I, I moved to your after I got married, but my kids are, my kids are all mom and cat. Me too.
What's missing is the article that should be in there, it's the town manager keeps mentioning. Open town meeting. Regular, open town meeting should be a battle. Special town meeting should be open town meeting, so we can conduct business. Without having long lead times and printing and everything else. We've lost a lot, we've lost our open town meeting. All this discussion here tonight, we could have come to a conclusion if it was an open town meeting, if it hadn't done.
I agree with you.
What's that?
I agree, yeah.
I think you should consider putting an article on, a special one. Going to have, asking the voters if they would like to have open town meetings or special town meetings. But we can get this stuff done.
I know Steve doesn't agree with it.
I, I, I said same line in this one, I can lose it. So, used to have a hundred and twenty five people show up for open town, now we'd have as many as nine hundred. So you have to, it's funny to me, why the people who are voting now would rather go back to a, a meeting where they don't vote. So you have eight, uh, hundred, seven hundred and seventy five people would say, I wanna vote with systems that I won't vote. So if you can answer that one, Ed.
Look, look in September, we have a special election.
You'd be lucky to get a hundred votes.
You'll be lucky to get a hundred votes.
And I slipped one more. So realistically, why, why, why am I here tonight? It all started with a little problem with my vote. Stumbled with the swim, and, you know, otherwise I probably wouldn't have been here, I wasn't here for eighteen and a half years. You know, something triggered me to come up here, but I know you want this open thing, but look, this is what we got. Uh, how much more do you think, how many more people have got that comment they had?
An open town meeting?
The only reason we're up here.
People who are interested enough to participate and get educated will be.
How's the word gonna get out to them?
Impostor board.
So. And so I'll consider, you know, you're gonna, you're hungry.
No, I think, I think I have direction.